We'll call the meeting to order. Roll call.
The proposed development on Bob Terrell's property, there is no doubt the effect of the stormwater runoff will be detrimental.
Yes.
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 Apparently the water is preemptively absorbed in the landscape. With the development proposal, most of the ground will be covered with concrete, driveways, and roadways or buildings. The flow of the water will change. The content of the water will also change. With this development, the stormwater will contain pollutants from lawn care chemicals and petrochemical pollutants. As at the last city council meeting where Bob Terrell proposed his plan, he indicated that he does not intend to do anything special or different to mitigate or manage the stormwater and resulting pollution. If the annexation goes through and the city of Lakeview accepts Bob Terrell's development plan, will the council require the developers to mitigate and lessen the damage to the wetlands, Black Hawk Lake, the outlet creek, and neighboring private property due to resulting stormwater runoff? If not, is the council satisfied that they are complicit and liable for the resulting pollution and damage to neighboring properties? I leave you with that question.
What I can tell you, Dorothy, is the low-impact study that we've been waiting on, we're trying to, and we've met with Bobby several times about rain gardens that he's going to install. We want to work with him without forcing him to do it. So far, we've gotten his cooperation with rain gardens, and we've addressed some of the tile issues, and we're negotiating with him right now. And the low-impact study will come to the council the first meeting in May.
I noticed you had coordinates that dealt with low-impact development earlier, and it was laid on the table and not discussed, at least in public, and...
Well, we've had several meetings with Bobby, and we've talked to him about the low-impact, and if we can work and make him do it without requiring him this time, this development anyway, he's agreed to do all this without being forced to do it.
We are concerned about the Terrell property, but also for anyone else who comes into Lakeview to do development, because when people come in to build in a big town, they would like to see what they have to comply with upfront. It makes all of us have this level playing field, and everybody's treated the same, so that one may not be treated differently than another, and I think that's real important for the council and this city to get ahead of that.
I would tell you, the council's all on board on the low-impact study, or to make him do that, but we want to make sure we didn't go up into this because we had no idea what to ask him for and what to do without getting a lot of advice from other communities, and I think we've got that now, so. As long as he'll do it voluntarily, we would like to do it that way. And so far, he's, in our meetings, he said he would do that, so.
Okay.
But we're going to bring this back up to the council in May.
Thank you.
We want to protect the lake. Everybody sitting here wants to do the lake.
Well, the outlet, I'm wondering a little about the outlet and the wetlands, so it's more than just the lake.
Right.
Thank you.
We want to protect everything. Thank you, Dorothy. Concerned agenda, any additions, corrections?
No, just to note that that fence permit is approved.
A motion approved, so we'll... Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Wolfman?
Yes.
Mohler?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
We're going to deviate from the agenda, and we're going to bring up the appointments to the Board of Adjustments so that they don't have to sit through the rest of the evening. I think we have a couple of questions. Do you have a couple of questions?
I just want to know if the people that are planning to apply for this position, if they are willing, or first of all, if they know what their responsibilities are to be on this board, and if they're willing to maybe take some further education, if there's something online or something that you can do that way, are you willing to do something like that to become more knowledgeable on it? Both.
Carol Rolst not here, she's working at the library, so. We just want to make sure if there's anything coming up, if you guys would attend it, that's all we're asking about.
That's not a problem for me. Glad to do it.
Okay, we've got three applicants who need a motion to approve two of them.
I'd like to make the motion to approve Carol and Richard.
I need a little clarification on this list. Because there's two separate terms, there's two different terms.
Okay, okay.
So one is an unexpired term, and that runs through February 28th of 2021, and then the full term runs through February 28th, 2023.
Separate motion, please, one.
No, just if we can determine who's who, you can have it in a motion.
Okay, I would say Carol through 2023 is the motion, and Richard through 2021.
Do we have a second on the motion?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Mohler?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Wolfman?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes. Yes.
Thanks for volunteering. Welcome to the public hearing on a request from the city of Lakeview to change the zoning for the library. Is there any input from the public?
Yep, probably so.
Just a background on that, that this issue was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission on Friday, and there was, there was really no comments on this. Everybody seemed, seemed agreeable to this notion. So this would propose to rezone the one lot which is directly adjacent to the east behind the, behind the public library, and this would be the one lot the city is now the owner of that, and would rezone that to be more consistent with the proposed use, which is basically a parking lot or some additional accessory buildings to the library.
We'll close the public hearing. Resolution 1820 would be approving that.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mohler?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Wolfman?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Welcome to the public hearing on a request from Lumberyard to change the designation. We had a little change on that, but everything is correct now.
Yeah, just, so, the, the issue again was brought to the Planning and Zoning Commission last Friday, with the, the original application on this said that the request would be to rezone from R3 residential to industrial, and during the, during the public hearing, then Chris from the, from the young Lumberyard had made the request then that instead of industrial, he would prefer that, that this lot be zoned as commercial. And a couple of things happened then after that, where two neighbors were present, and Mike's here tonight, and they were, were favorable to this notion about commercial instead of industrial, limits the use not being a truly industrial use. And then also Randy Kluger was one of the neighbors, and actually Randy owns the next lot to, further to the west, and he too then would begin the process to rezone his lot as commercial, and this, so this may potentially be, Chris might talk about many storage units or something like that, and then Randy would, would do either a residential or a commercial use on his property. But I have Chris talk through that.
Chris, do you have anything you want to add?
The only thing I would add would be that that day, that last Friday, I also offered it out there that if you wanted to change all of the Lumberyard property to commercial from the industrial that it is, that would ensure that we would never put any type of manufacturing facility there in the part of downtown.
I guess I'd give my opinion on that then too, because I did do some checking, Chris, where it, within the industrial zone, a specific authorized use was the storage and sale of building materials. So it, it seemed like it's proved clear cut that it was properly zoned as industrial.
I'm good with that.
Any further comment from the public? We'll close the public hearing. Resolution 1821 is approving that.
Make the motion to approve.
Sorry.
Roll call.
Mohler?
Yes.
Wolfman?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Welcome to the public hearing on the electric revenue loan agreement. Bill, do you have anything you want to say?
Nothing to add.
Just, again, we're going to take a look real quick at, it's on page 10, just a reminder, the same thing that we went over at the last council meeting, this would be the proposed debt schedule. So again, just the notion that we would propose to issue $700,000 of electric revenue debt, and the interest rate on that is yet undetermined, but estimated at three and a half percent, and the issue date would be June 1st of 2018. We would look to split this issuance between former State Bank and Iowa State Bank.
Does anyone have any questions?
How many years is this?
We figure 10, 10 years. 10 years.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Resolution 1821 is to enter in that revenue loan agreement.
Now, I guess, this, this, after the public hearing, we got, you got to have a public hearing to issue the debt, and then you got to take some action afterwards. Okay, this does not enter into the loan agreement, this expresses our intent to enter into the loan agreement at a later date, so this is not the loan agreement, but that would, would happen likely during the second meeting of May.
So we'll... Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Wolfman?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Mohler?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Okay, 1823 is approving the contract and payment bonds.
Yep, so this does approve the contract and approve the bonds. With legacy power line, everything is in order and ready to proceed.
We have that motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mohler?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Wolfman?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, 1823 is approving the contract and payment bonds.
Yep, so this does approve the contract and approve the bonds. With legacy power line, everything is in order and ready to proceed.
We have that motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mohler?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Wolfman?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Well, the public hearing on the wastewater treatment plant, I'll bet you this is where Bob's going to tell us. Have you got any good news?
No.
I didn't think so. We'll take whatever news you got.
I'm standing.
That's good. I'm glad you're here.
We're getting there. Last week, we received bids on the wastewater treatment plant. We received two bids. The low bid was Grunman Hicks of $6 million, and King was at 7.12, well above our estimate, which was about, oh, maybe just under $4 million, $500,000. What we're doing right now is we're looking, looking at a couple of different things. We're in discussions with Grunman Hicks to identify what things we can do to reduce the cost of the project. They've identified some, we've identified some, we're not to point tonight where we can really put a dollar value around them, but maybe a couple of examples. Originally, we were proposing to tunnel under the creek to simplify the process. They indicated that if we wanted to open cut construction, we could probably save in the range of $100,000. So that's something we've considered. There's concern about some of the piping, so we're looking at some alternates. I'm going to hand out, if it's all right, just an example of what we've seen so far today, looking at the costs. And Vicki, I'll try to explain this so we don't, because you won't have it available to you.
Thank you.
Vicki, can you hear better?
Yeah, I couldn't hear Bob too well at first, but then I could later, so.
We didn't put a microphone up there tonight, sorry.
If you don't mind, I can step in front of it, up closer if you'd have...
That'd be good.
I'm not necessarily married to the podium. What I've handed out was just a comparison based on how we put our cost estimate together and some of the preliminary numbers we've gotten back from Grunman Hicks. What you see is that there's a couple of areas where there's really significant differences. The plumbing piping is the largest, a million dollars difference. This is work that Grunman Hicks is doing themselves. This is not the two sewers, this is just the piping inside the plant, which is kind of hard to believe, and it's that big of a number, so we need to have some discussion with them. The next two numbers, the Outfall Sewer and the North Trunk, the Outfall Sewer is the pipe that leads from the existing treatment plant to the new treatment plant. And I think if we can reroute around the hill and we can eliminate that tunnel crossing, we can probably get that down much closer to the estimate. The North Trunk is the one that goes, basically extends, picks up the lift station and extends it north into the treatment plant. That is something that if we didn't want to do, we could eliminate, because it was added to the project sort of, so it's, this is one piece we can take out of it, and you can see that's about $400,000 savings. You can always go back and do that later. If you do eliminate it, there's a decision to make, because the design of that drives the lift station at the plant down about 10 or 12 feet. So if we wanted to eliminate it temporarily, we probably got the lift station down low so we can build it later. If you don't think you'd ever do it, there's another opportunity. We'll try to price that up. So if you can look a lot of it, it's a type of, for example, the building construction, which is the, one of the areas we oftentimes see deviation that's actually below the estimate. The SAGR system, it's about 25% higher, again, Grunman Hicks is doing that. The mechanical and the electrical, the electrical's actually 22% under. What we're seeing is that there's subcontractors' costs are at or below our estimate, and their costs are considerably higher. So that's, it's a lot of their internal numbers. So what we're doing right now is we're going to be over the next couple of, probably 10 days, working with them to identify specific changes that we can make to reduce the cost. Also, we've got inquiries out to see whether or not if we rebid the project, we would get any additional interest. Because unless we can get some other interest, and rebidding it may not be effective, because one of the things that can occur is that Grunman Hicks now knows what the other bidder is, and if you rebid it, there's nothing to keep them where they are. And so with a 1.12 million dollar spread, unless you can introduce more competition into it, they might be inclined to say, I can go up, and you don't end up in any better stead than you are now. So we'll be trying to assess whether or not we can find additional bidders. Our initial inquiries are not super optimistic, mostly related to location, that a lot of contractors say, well, we can find work closer to home. So that's the second avenue. We'll make a recommendation for the council in its next meeting. And then also Scott has received some preliminary information on possible financing of the project up to the, that received from Grunman Hicks. You got that Friday, you probably haven't been through and digested, I think you've given it to everybody.
I've just given it to everybody tonight, so.
So, well, we'll need to figure out how to marry that together. So tonight, we're not asking for any action, we have the public hearing tonight, which is the formality, which is really approving the plan specification, formal contract and estimate of cost. That's required before you can enter into contract with anybody. If you decide later to reject bids and rebid it, unless we make significant changes to the project, the hearing probably stands, and we don't need to repeat that. So our suggestion is you go forward with the hearing, it doesn't do anything, it doesn't do anything to the bids tonight, it just simply says, you're meeting the procedural requirement. The worst that can happen is if you change the project, you'd have to repeat the hearing. But if you don't change it significantly, you're probably, the hearing stands, even if we decide to reject and rebid the project. So that would be our recommendation, to go ahead and approve that resolution tonight, and then take no action for the bids, and then we'll get our report, and then I'll be back again in two weeks, and with the recommendation, so.
My question, I guess I've got a couple of questions. Firstly, you, what you kind of tell me now, pay me now or pay me later, so, I think what's going to be an important factor if we, if we do the cuts here, we're going to, this was a good plan from day one, is what you said, this is the way we should run it, this is the way it should be completed, so it gives us a good opportunity to have a top-notch plant in order to increase our growth, or whatever might be the case. Now you tell me that you want to cut here, cut there, what's that going to do to the integrity of the plant, integrity of down the road, or whatever it might be if we need to have a more development, whatever might be the case? I guess my feeling is, the only thing that's going to happen is everything's going to go up if we keep going down from there.
There's, there's different answers depending on what we're looking at. So for example, if you're looking at, if we lay the same pipe by open cut versus tunnel, you end up with the same out product that you have, it's just a change in procedure. The same way within the treatment plant, the normal DNR standard for the treatment plant, and it's an old standard that was developed from the 1970s, is we have to use ductile iron pipe. Today, we now have plastic pipe, which they don't regularly approve, but you can do variance for that under certain circumstances. Actually, the plastic pipe today is probably just as good or better than the old, the ductile iron pipe. So those changes can, would not affect the capacity or durability of the project. If you start taking out, for example, the North Trunk Sewer, you're exactly right, that that starts to cut back what the, what your, not necessarily the capacity you're doing, but it means that all the flow still has to go back around through the existing system creates problems. So there's two kinds of changes. One that wouldn't affect anything related to the durability and capacity, and others that would, and so we'll, we'll identify those in that respective bucket, if that makes sense, so that there are certain things you might be able to do that have no impact, or just things that the contractor identified. For example, one of the things that they came up with is if we could adjust the connection to the treatment plant temporarily, we might be able to reduce the cost of bypass pumping. They identified that as like $17,000, it wouldn't have any effect long-term, it's just if they can come up with a little different way to do it, they might be able to save some money. So what we're focusing on is on things that we could save money that wouldn't affect the outcome, we'll also probably throw in a couple for you to consider that would, but we're not necessarily saying that those, those you are giving up something in return for that. So there are some that you don't give anything up, those are kind of the low-hanging fruit, and others that become more difficult, so.
You got over the limit.
We aren't going to close the gap.
No, that's, and I guess my concern is that we close the gap by hurting the plant, and that's, that's a big concern of mine, because like I said, we didn't miss it by a little bit, we missed it by a lot. We've been telling everybody 4.5 for two years, and now it makes us look like we don't know what the hell we're doing, and I'm starting to believe that.
I appreciate the feeling, I mean, I understand.
I mean, you guys...
When we did the, we used the same estimating procedure for the earthwork and the pipe work and the subcontractor work, and, you know.
Are you doing any other plans?
Yeah.
How close are you on them bids?
They've been going from 10% under to 10% over, so.
What happened here, then?
Don't know. I mean, I think what we're seeing elsewhere is we're having more competition, we're typically seeing four to five bidders, and competition bias, and none of these contract, I mean, Grunman Hicks has done this before, King hasn't really done it, just not their cup of tea. So I think it's a combination of how they price and lack of contractors, and I apologize for it, I mean, we don't, you know, we, we base our price, our estimate on what we're seeing, I mean, we've got 10 or 15 of those that were under design and bid, probably six or eight that have been bid in the last year, and they've been pretty close.
I missed this one.
Yeah, I sure did, and I understand that.
Would it have been different if we were able to go to bed in November like we had planned?
I don't think so.
Would it have got more back bidders?
No, from what we're, from the conversations I've had, I don't think it would have made any difference. We'll, we'll continue to explore that, but I don't think at this point it would have made any difference.
So the difference is, or part of the difference is the fact that contractors aren't as close to us as maybe they are to some of the other ones they're working on?
In some cases, that's the case, in some cases, you know, you just never know. I mean, they tend to, more of the contractors tend to be in central Iowa and eastern Iowa than they are here, but that's, you know, we've seen them, we've seen them elsewhere, and they haven't really had that impact on it, so.
Is Grunman Hicks open to tweaking some of the moves?
Yes. I mean, you have to be careful, you can't negotiate, you can't go in and say, okay, we're just going to arm twist you, but you can make, you know, you can make changes, others that we can have a conversation like we have. Can you change the method of construction, but that saves some money? Or how, because every contractor looks at how they build things differently, and so...
So if they, if, let's say we ask for a change, what if they go into a different area and they say, well, we need more money for this complete area? How, how's that handled then? Do we tell them no, or, or what, you know, it's a two-way street, that's why, once you got a bid, like I said, we're, I think we're committed to, we're committed to, to the land, we're committed to crap, we've got a lot of money spent before we even get into this, and I don't want us to get a change this. What we've got to do is figure out a way how we can pay for this without eating everything, everybody up with, after, I know the rates are going to go up, don't get me wrong, but we've got to figure out somehow to lessen that burden, so I don't know how we can do that, and I think that needs to be looked at real strong, too.
That's part of what Scott's really looking at. To answer your question about, the discussion at this point is changes to reduce the cost without any corollary addition. So anything that they would say, if we change something, it's, would be if there's a deduct and add, those, you'll see it only as a net change, you won't see, and it won't be, so for example, if we're going to take something out and use a different method, all you're going to see is a net decrease, so we won't say, okay, for example, we're going to take out the tunnel and put in open cut, you know, one might be 120,000 savings and 20,000, you'll see the 100,000 difference. So we won't end up with saying, okay, two weeks from now, here are some changes, and then they're going to come back later and say, oh, we want some more. So that, it's, at this point, it's a package arrangement. And what we would end up doing is that we would end up, if we decide to go that direction, you will end up entering into the contract with them for their bid, and then a change order for the changes. So that's, procedurally, that's how you end up doing it. So if this...
Well, I just feel like we're between a rock and a hard place. This is huge, this is huge for this community, and it's, it's just a, I think it's almost a tragedy.
I understand.
This is a huge miss, and it's really going to impact the, our population, it's huge.
I understand, you know, we're going to see what we can do in the next two weeks to, A, either find more bidders, to try to rebid it and see if we can get a better price, or see what we can do without sacrificing the quality for reducing this down. No, I'm not going to tell you I can get it down by, to the 4.5, but I think we can find some ways to get at least some noticeable savings off it without sacrificing the quality.
Good start, be 30% off the engineering fee.
I think there was a moment of hesitation.
I think that was.
I'll make it. How does that affect the engineering fees, what you just said?
At this point, I mean, those are, I mean, the engineering fee, the contract, we have a contract amount, that doesn't, at this point, unless we change it, that doesn't affect it. The higher the lower bid, it doesn't affect it, it doesn't go up with the higher number. Historically, in the old days, they used to tie in the cost of the project, but they don't anymore, so that's been not been available, and that's been a non-recommended practice for about 30 years.
Okay, I thought we could move.
I guess we'll keep looking, Bob.
We didn't have time between the time the bids came in and...
We realize that. I appreciate you coming up, I know it's your wife's birthday.
Yeah, wish her happiness birthday.
Oh, it is, yeah.
Yeah. Well, I'd still like to tell you, we're really disappointed.
Fortunately, my daughter's took her out for the birthday.
Well, we appreciate you being here. We'll wait two weeks, see what we come up with.
Yeah, we'll see what we can do, see what comes up with the plan in the next couple of weeks, and we'll get, we'll try to wrap that up in the middle next week, so that Scott has time to get it to everybody before the meeting, so we're not surprised.
Just as a, as a matter of course on this, we're actually at a time now where there's three weeks between the next regular city council meeting, so, sometime, I guess.
We have an extra week, shouldn't we put it?
Yes, five Mondays.
How long do we have before we have to accept the United Bid List?
60 days.
So we're not at risk for that.
Well, we, I mean, we need to make that decision.
I'm just saying that would, you know, those are things you can put on the table and decide.
Right. Because every time we say we won't do it, we'll do it next year, we'd never do it next year. It'd just fall through the cracks. And I think it's important for the town, if we put waste in somebody's basement, they'd never forgive you. I have some people on that list.
I appreciate that.
Thanks, Bob. You want to talk about any of the funding over a public hearing?
So I just want to run through some of the numbers. Close the public hearing, John and Will.
We'll close the public hearing.
If you want to approve that.
You can have a seat.
That resolution on the plan.
Resolution 1824, procedural, will you motion on that?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
We'll call.
Oliver.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Goldman.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Did you get that second email that I'd sent today, Vicki, about this, this financial sheet from our financial advisor?
Is that the one where you sent several copies of the financial options we have?
Yep, yep, that's the one.
Yes, but I wasn't able to print it, so.
Okay, well, I just want to talk through these, kind of big picture, not, and again, not that we're making any, any decisions about anything relating to financing. I just really want to let you know that there are options as far as the type of funds that, that we could utilize to repay this debt. You know, I guess any way you slice it, we would issue debt for the total amount of the, of the project, and that's the total construction cost plus engineering fees, plus land purchase, plus easements, that type of stuff. At that, it was over 6.7, over 6.8 million dollars. So we looked at, I had our financial advisor run, run some numbers based on a debt issuance of 6.7 million dollars. So just running through those options real quick. And the option one would be to utilize SRF only, okay, but that we would borrow 6.7 million dollars instead of 4.69. You see that the, the SRF program, any of these that we talk about generally will be 20 years at 2%. So it's actually 1.75 is the, is the interest plus 0.25 administration fee, but 2% interest ends up being what it is. So you see the annual sewer payments, if we did 6.7, it's 427,000. Look at the paragraph up above, we're talking about the original plan of 4.65. You see the annual debt service payments of 293,000 dollars. So just, of course, a huge, very, very huge increase, but then it goes through and lays down what the, the sewer rate increases would be. And this is talking 18% for four additional years. Current, the program we were on currently had proposed 12 and a half for three more years. Option two just says, take some amount of that and issue some general obligation debt. And, and we could do that, and it actually, this debt is also issued through the SRF program. And it's issued then with the same interest and repayment as the, as the revenue debt. So it's 2%, 20 years. This, one would, would say that if you still borrow our original SRF amount of 4.65 million dollars, that would need total GO borrowing of 2,500,000 dollars. And annual debt, GO debt service is 125,000 dollars. The number there to pay attention to then is a dollar 57. That would add a dollar 57 to the, to the property tax rate, if you look at that. Option three says, issue the, the SRF and then look at some, some GO, but it also includes some, some TIF funds. So this scenario proposes the SRF at 4.65 million, our original amount, proposes GO borrowing of 1.3 million, because it was talking, it's 750,000 dollars was the number they used there for TIF funds. That we'd be able to allocate funds that would come in through FY 2022, and that's 750,000. So utilizing TIF at 750,000, utilizing GO money at 1.3 million, that fully funds down the total amount of debt with 4.65, that's also in the SRF. Option four just kind of tweaks the, the GO thing a little bit and says, what happens if I only want to, to issue, to increase my debt service levy by $1? Okay, what that ends up being is that the SRF amount is 5.4 million then. Can you see what the, what the annual increases are then? Where it's 13 and a half percent, but this is for four years, not for three. And then GO borrowing of 1.3 million, and that, again, that increases the, the debt, debt service levy by $1. Option number five that they laid out here, it's just simply to increase the term on the SRF. And, and this is an option that the standard repayment terms on SRF is 20 years. They do have an option where you, you can choose to repay over 30 years, but when you do that, interest rate goes up 1%, 1%. So, and you can see how that equates then to annual payments and the, the minimum required by the city is then 13 and a half percent rate increases for four years. But again, we're paying debt for 10 years longer. And so not looking really for any, any decision, I just kind of want to lay those options out so that you have a chance to, I guess, understand that there, there are options and kind of have a chance to think about it a little bit. Questions, comments?
Did we talk about, a little bit about hardship?
Yeah, okay. This concept of being a disadvantaged community. We have asked the Iowa Finance Authority their initial response about whether we, we may be able to be declared a disadvantaged community, and their initial response was not positive. Okay, now, we can apply, and it's just a, like a three-page application, you fill it out, and we can apply to see if we can be a disadvantaged community. And the benefit of that is that you get 30, a 30-year repayment schedule, but it's at the same interest rate as the 20-year.
So 2%.
So.
You'll know if you fill it out whether you qualify. There's three categories. You don't qualify, you do qualify, and they'll let you know. So in other words, there's, there's a, if you're above a certain, if, you know, if you come up with a certain criteria, it's automatic. And if there's another criteria on the other end where it's automatically no, and where most communities fall is in the middle somewhere, where they kind of have a sliding scale. There's no harm to fill it out.
I'd say, I certainly would think we're going to, we ought to fill the application out and see, see where it just falls.
You'll know right away when you fill it out before you send it in, which of the three buckets you fall in. If you're in the middle bucket, you don't know the answer until you get back. If you know, neither of the other two, you know. If you, if you definitely qualify, send, send it in because you're qualified. If you're definitely not, it's from that we're sending it in because you won't pay it no matter what. Now, chances are you'll fall in the middle. That's where most people fall.
How many communities have been dealt with it, done this?
Probably 20. And of those, probably about a little less than half qualify. My observation is the smaller the community, the more likely they're going to qualify. The bigger communities don't even, don't even try. Maybe talking about 6, 7,000, they'll be in tries because you, structurally, you can't qualify very well. Now, there's a few communities that are really economically depressed that can, but not probably in central Iowa. Cities your size is probably a little less, it's, it wouldn't be half, it would probably be a little less than that. It depends upon what your debt load is, your rate structure, there's some other things that enter into it. It's, it just takes a little time to go through the calculations. It doesn't take that long, so. It's hard to guess because sometimes they come out, you know, kind of different answers than what you think, because something that, that scores well in their system doesn't, doesn't really bother people. So you're so used to it. Rates and, it's a combination of rates, it's overall impact, it's not just sewer rates, it's the overall impact, utility rates, outstanding debt, and household income plays into it a little bit, so.
But we're going to fill it out anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's no, it's a simple form. You have the information, it takes a half hour to fill out.
Yep.
Any more questions? I guess we got all the answers we're going to get tonight.
I'll be back in three weeks.
Okay. Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Looking forward to it.
Okay, well, resolution 1825 is our final approval for tax abatements. Everybody saw that. We have the motion. So, second?
Second.
We'll call.
Goldman.
Yes.
Oliver.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Okay, we have an administrative report.
Yeah, just a request regarding farmer's market. Last year, the city and the farmer's market put the cost of having one portable toilet down there for the summer. And they would like to do that again. Cost was $90 per month, would like to do that again. And, you know, Terry's the coordinator, but then would request that the city put that down there at city expense.
Do the vendors pay anything every time they come? Is there a charge?
Yes, for advertising. I don't charge them. We don't charge them. We've been trying to get this going, you know, and it's, the only thing is when we do some advertising, I, you know, cost maybe five bucks a week or whatever. I know it don't sound like much, but then, you know, it just.
Pick on their hair, I just didn't know if they all, I thought when they first started, they had to pay 10 bucks or something.
I never ever did hear that.
That was quite well done.
I know, we never did. We've been there this, six years.
How many do you get on an average down there that, and then like that? With the spaces down there?
Well, and here's something, Julie wrote up here, you know, more people downtown on the, you know, bike rides that, a lot of people use it from the bar. And Memorial Day, every Saturday, Sippin' Sample, Fourth of July, Carnival Weekend, Labor Day, and probably more people use this than the Sock Trail Trail. There, you know, every one of these bike deals, you can get met at the Art Works or, and I've even seen down there, when we're down there, that people will stop at the elevator and come over and use this spot. So it's just not a, it isn't just farmer's market, it's more of a public thing than, so. But I, we paid her.
Community club always pays for some at Sippin' Sample.
Yeah, I have extra ones, you need.
Yeah, I know that.
Do we, do we, so do we ever have this building open for the bathrooms to be used here on the weekends?
Generally not, just for special events. And really, I'd only say Sippin' Sample.
I think it's something we should continue to promote, so as long as we're not spending $6 million, I'd argue more.
Was that a motion, Wendy?
That's a motion.
We'll call.
Thank you.
Yes.
Goldman.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Oliver.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes, but I, I guess I think that there should be some kind of a vendor fee. I mean, the city has all the costs, and it's not, it's, it's like what you said, it's not a huge cost, and, and it's a good event, it's a good thing for the community. Just that, you know, it doesn't bring any money in at all, right? It would just cost us money, then?
Yeah, but, you know, I understand what you're saying, Vicki, but my, my thinking is that we're trying to get people to come downtown, so if this is one step to, if it costs us 90 bucks a month.
I agree with that, I do.
I mean, you know, I mean, I guess that's, that's, who knows? Somebody that's driving by, he's a little can't click, who knows? I'm just saying, it's just, it's there. And it's something that is a good thing, so.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, all right. It's just another benefit.
What else we got? Uh, this notion about a summer employee, we had one of our folks that we had hired as a utility quota position for Bill. Bill and Bonover has declined the position. So I guess I would ask the council, would you like to do about that? Would you like to fill this? You know, we had always, in the past, had two. This year, we look to expand that to, to a third one. And, you know, so would we look to fill that third position? And if so, I guess we just propose we would, we would just advertise and keep advertisements open until the positions fill, not have a, not have a due date on that.
What do we have for applicants? Is it just those three?
We have one, we have one other, one other applicant.
Because he's after 18, right?
Right, this, he's after 18.
Well, we ought to advertise. Bill, you still could need him, right?
I bet.
I think, I think that we already approved the, the third person, so I think we should go ahead and.
Read everything.
Yep, that's what we're going to do. Advertise, George, find a good one.
Okay, we'll do. Just a couple of other things for you. We got the notice in the mail here about having dust control on the streets again. We have, over the past 10 years and more, I think we've done dust control on the Shop Road, and then also a springtime application of dust control in certain areas in the campground. Just know that this would be $1,450. Tends to go up a little bit every year.
But we're not doing Sunset Drive, no.
No, kind of.
Cost will down?
We're not, yeah, we're not doing Sunset Drive. It's about the snow town.
April snow.
It, it keeps the dust down.
Yeah, that's true. Okay, I'd rather do the application than the snow.
Okay.
Talk to, I mean, myself.
Good choice.
Camper's like it.
And one of my last things here, shoreline cleanup. We're proposed to do shoreline cleanup this Saturday. And again, you're, so you're looking at the forecast about, about what would happen. I guess what I would propose to do, that I'd like to wait probably until Wednesday and kind of play it by ear, see what happens on Wednesday and see what the forecast is going to be. But if we need to reschedule, I'm just wondering what it looks like if we push off till the following weekend, the 28th. You were around, Whitey? Does that do anything for you, Terry?
That, that won't matter to us, but, oh, because, you know, part of parks don't start until, but it's also prom weekend.
Yeah.
That.
That's a different group to clean up than go to prom.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying that that's what's happening.
That's one prom scheduled again?
One day.
Well, hopefully, one a day works.
Well, I do feel.
And I'm interested in your thoughts about if the weather's going to be kind of iffy on Saturday, would you still want to have clean?
Here's my thing, if you're going to be down on the shoreline, it's going to be wet and slippery. And people, if it's going to be cold, you're going to get a turnout.
That's my main concern is I think volunteers.
I think waiting till the 28th would be better because.
Warmer too.
Yeah, so.
Hopefully.
That's, that way it's getting out early so people can plan it and, you know, to postpone. Like I said, it's nothing worse than fighting cold out there, there's only a handful of people out there, and you can't blame them if it's crap, you know?
No, that's right.
And those rocks are slippery.
Yeah.
I guess I had planned on waiting till Wednesday and, and see what happens.
I think I'd just switch it.
Because they're talking Wednesday, weather.
Wednesday.
Yeah, still not going to be warm.
They're talking Wednesday snow.
I, I agree with Tammy, I would, you know, the weather forecast.
About city guys, we were going to get Kelly and, and Matt, right? Not this weekend.
Yeah.
No, Matt's busy with Kelly and Brian.
But on the 28th, you'll have to see if, we've got to have at least two city guys if we can, at least one.
Yeah, and the difference in the turnout, like Whitey mentioned, the forecast is 48 degrees for Saturday and 30% chance of rain. For the following Saturday is a 30% chance of rain, but 63 degrees. So.
But the volunteers, we get, they're pretty dedicated. They sing one show every year.
But you don't know what the weather's going to do until.
Yeah.
The day before.
Yeah, because they won't know certainly by Wednesday. That's too far to predict anything correctly.
Well, we'll get it changed to the 28th.
Might have a couple of city guys then, Bill. Not, we've got to have at least one.
Yep.
I can find volunteers for everything else, but.
I think we're not moving snow.
If we're not moving the snow, because we'll need new stuffs.
Well, then we'll be, it'll be canceled anyways.
Northwest Iowa League?
Northwest Iowa League is this Thursday, five o'clock in Glidden at the Lincoln Club.
You gotta leave early. I think it's what, forty minutes to get there?
Forty, forty.
Think you're up, Whitey?
Yep.
Okay. Did, did everyone in the council got, I got three extra copies of the cityscape from the league. If anybody wants an extra one.
And why would you have extra copies?
Lakeview made it. Lakeview made it, made it, so. They put a thank you card in there.
Oh, did they?
Yesterday's in. Anyway, Lakeview's in the cityscape. I'll bet the newspaper won't. They always pay attention to where we're gonna be on the other side. Is it, oh, is it? Oh. Is that it?
Yep.
Welcome to your turn. Like that?
I'll second it.
In your turn. Thank you, everybody.
Have fun on Vic.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
I hope you heard most of it.
I did, I did. Thanks.
Was it a little bit better with that different speaker?
It was, you know, but it's funny, like when Bob speaks, it gets louder and then it fades clear away. And then it comes back louder. It's weird.
A long ways away.
That sounds like a forecast.
Isn't that funny that forecasters can be rocking for some of the time and still keep a job and still get an engineer?
We were all thinking the same.
John, do I just hit, John, do I just hit the red button again?